I call the recess meeting from November 23 to order. As always, a soft invocation, I'll ask Commissioner Walker if he agrees, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my privilege. Father, we come humbly before you this evening, asking that you bless us with your presence here at our meeting. We always need your guidance and we all need to turn to you for guidance. Lord, your wisdom and your truth is supreme in this world. We have some uncertain times that we're going through. We were talking earlier this evening, some of us, about we don't know who to believe or what to believe anymore, but we know that your word is always true and your word is always a blessing for us if we'll just take advantage of it. We thank you for all our blessings for this beautiful county we live in, good people that are in it, and thank you for the things that happen that are good for us. We just went through Thanksgiving a long ago and that was a time we could reflect on our blessings, and we have many. Lord, we ask that you be with those who need your help, Rick's wife and others who are affected by this virus epidemic or pandemic, and we ask that you be with them, be with any others who have a special need. Let them feel your love, your presence, your guidance, whatever they need to help them make it through whatever situation they're facing. And we know there's a lot of happiness and joy in the season we're coming into, the Christmas season, but there are some lords who are struggling and this is a difficult time for them, and they should be happy they unfortunately have some reasons that keep them from being, and we ask especially that you be with those. Again, we thank you for all that you do for us, we thank you especially for what you are, and we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for thoughtful approval, Commissioner Walker. As please send, continue to join us for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the gospel of liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask of approval for the agenda.
So now?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Now that's for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Move on.
Are we counting Mr. Langford as the second?
Yeah. Commissioner Minenhall sit first and Commissioner Langford. All right. Move on now to our discussion agenda on item A, the Christmas bonus for part-time employees without set schedules.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have some discussion about that if we could, please.
Okay. I think Julie, have you got something to present to us on it?
Well, so on your agenda, you'll see the different amounts that are listed on there, for the 300 hours, the 400 hours, and the 500 hours, and then I've got budget amendment number 44 to attach to whichever amount you decide to appropriate towards that. The amount for the 300 hours is the $9,452, and then the ones that have worked over 400 hours was the $6,495, and the over 500 hours is $4,358. So I've got a budget amendment reflecting each of those depending on which one that you approve. And since he's not here for discussion, I did hear from Commissioner Morris because he's absent today and just wanted to let the board know that he was in favor of the 300 hours had he been able to be here and vote on that.
Okay.
So that's just information to pass along. And then if you've got any other questions about, and that was for the $250 bonus for the part-time employees without a permanent schedule.
Okay. Refresher memory, what was the Christmas bonus for the ones without a set schedule?
$250.
I mean with a set schedule. Was it also?
$250 is all the part-time.
Okay. All right. All right. Commissioner Walker, I asked real quick, Commissioner Minenhall, I'll catch you on your end.
Whatever thoughts, whatever.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Minenhall.
I certainly agree with you to provide part-time people even without a set schedule portion of the Christmas bonus. From the best of my memory, we gave full-time employees $500 bonus, correct? And then the part-time with a set schedule, $250. Now we're recommending either over $300, $400, $500 for the ones that get $250 bonus also, correct?
Right, right.
My recommendation would be the over $300, which would be $9,452.
Yes.
That's my best one, I would.
And if I may, on full-time, that's $500, if they was here January 1st, if they's here July 1st, it's $250, and if they's here October 1st, it's $725. That's the way we did it before.
Okay. I knew it was $100 something, actually, I was asking, okay. All right, Commissioner Walker?
Thanks, sir. What I was wanting to check about, Mr. Chairman, was I don't want anybody to feel like they've been slighted. To me, it's not a good situation for folks to say, well, this person got it and I didn't, whoever that person might happen to be. So what is the best way we could do a bonus for the part-time employees that feel like everybody who really feels like they should have had a bonus, deserve to have a bonus, would get one? Is it what Commissioner Minenhall suggested, or?
It is.
It is. And that would be what I would be in favor of.
Okay. Commissioner Langford?
The total is part of the, each one breakout down here, 300, 400, 500 hours in these three different breakouts.
Mm-hmm.
That's the total, what is the total on all that? What will be the total if we go with that?
If you did the least amount of hours, which is the 300, the most it would cost will be $9,452.
Okay.
And if you did just the 400 hours, it'd be $6,000, so you wouldn't have to total them together because the most you're going to spend is $9,452 if you do the 300 hours.
Right. That answers my question.
This was I'm in concurrence with the rest of the board on this. As far as moving this to action night, Commissioner Walker, how do you feel about it?
Sure.
Are you sure?
Yes, I think we've done enough, so what's one more?
And that's budget amendment number 44.
Okay.
But now, if you want to make it for next meeting, that'd be all right, too.
All right, well, I think we'll go ahead and let this go through tonight.
Yeah, Julia has to do the checks for the Christmas bonuses.
People have been calling the master all week. How are you getting paid for them?
They want to do the Christmas shopping.
You ain't talking about Mr. Carter, are you? You ain't talking about Mr. Carter, are you? Has he been calling you all week? You can tell me a drill, yeah, I kind of figured it.
That's the gate.
We'll move on now to our action agenda. Item B, the firefighter academy position and budget amendment number 43. Do I have a motion on this?
Would we approve?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right. Item B, the Fire March's request to purchase AED from Carrizac Funds in the amount of $7,471.80 with no county funds being used. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Item C, the Christmas bonus for part-time employees without a set schedule, budget amendment number 44, do I have a motion on this?
42.
Forty.
Forty-four.
It should be 44.
Budget amendment 42.
What was I saying on the sheet here?
Forty-two is the capital reserve that was in the consent, and then 43 was the
Firefighter Academy Position.
Firefighter Academy, so this one would be 44. For $9,452.
Motion to approve and to make sure we have it analyzed as budget number 44.
All right. I have a second on this?
What? Excuse me.
Your turn.
I got a question after we get a second.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Langford.
Where is this money, is this money coming out of the monies we got from state?
No, this is, you know, the last meeting you approved the Christmas bonus for the regular full-time and part-time employees, it was like 180, coming out of contingency. Then you all decided you wanted to try to do something for the part-time employees that don't have a set schedule but worked a certain number of hours. So this would just come out of contingency also and be added to that additional Christmas bonus. So it's coming from, this is county funds, just like the other was.
I thought we was discussing the funds would come out of the pandemic funds.
That was a hazard, we paid it, we was discussing.
Hazardous, yes.
Yeah.
And that's not back on until December the 14th.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Any more comments on this? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right. Well, now move on to our comments from our commissioners and manager, and I'll start with Commissioner Minenhall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would just like to welcome everybody. This is a great crowd. Thank you for all coming. I know many of the people here, from the back row to the front. Thank y'all for coming. Always good to see people from the community to come out and come to the governmental process. Makes me happy that people will come out and watch the meeting and ask for persons. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Make sure that you know that. As we had Thanksgiving, and I know the people are saying, why is he wishing a happy Thanksgiving now? We've not had any meetings to have done that, so happy Thanksgiving. I hope you all had a happy Thanksgiving. Now I'm going to wish, if you don't come back, wish you all a Merry Christmas. I'm going to try to get them all involved, Mr. Chairman, at one time. Because I started out with Veterans Day, then I went from Veterans Day to Thanksgiving, now Thanksgiving to Christmas, try to get them all.
Forget about New Year's.
Just in case we have any of these, anyway, community members not back before Christmas, Merry Christmas. And I hope Santa Claus is good to y'all as he is going to be to me because my wife told me Santa, she visited Santa the other day, and I'm going to get a whole lot of gifts this year, so looking forward to it. Looking forward to it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minenhall. Commissioner Walker?
I've been saving up some time, can I use it now?
Use all you want. Commissioner Langford said, use all you want, so.
Well, I hope he does. First off, I want to say these 16 years that I've served as a commissioner have gone by very fast. And I remember how I saw things 16 years ago when I was just coming on this board and there were the challenges we faced and the county was in not such good financial shape and we couldn't even help on a cove. Commissioner Langford, you remember, couldn't even help them finance their library. The local government commission would not allow us to be part of them getting along. But since then, things have gone up pretty much steadily, Commissioner Langford, Commissioner Booth, who's not on the board anymore, others. I could name some of the others that have been part of the board over the years. We've all, and the employees, the county employees really, really did their part. They went years without raises, without bonuses, to help bring our county into better financial shape. And for the past few years, we've enjoyed the benefits of all that work because the county is in pretty good financial shape. We've made progress in some ways, and in some ways, we still need to make more progress. When I first came on the board, I asked people what their priorities were. I went around the county talking to people and asking them, saying, well, what do you feel like is the most important need in our county now? What would you like to see happen? Well, most of the people, a good number of them said, we don't want high taxes. We don't want to see our taxes raised any more than they absolutely have to, and preferably we want to see them kept as low as reasonably possible. And I think that's happened. When I came on the board, the tax rate was 62 cents per hundred dollars value. We dropped it to 60, it stayed there for many years, and it just a few years ago, a couple of years or so ago, went back up to 62. Very reasonable when compared to other counties around. And we started a school fund. I don't know if any other counties are doing that or not, but we started a special four cent school fund that can only be used for school needs, particularly capital needs. And that's proved to be very worthwhile. We built schools, we've done a lot of good things for the schools with that fund. But I want to get back to the priorities of the people. It was low taxes. It was quality of life. And by quality of life, I mean people who live in Stokes County want a safe and comfortable place to live. We provided that with good law enforcement. We still have some progress, I think, to make with things like recreation, for example. We do some, but I think we could do more. And there's things that could be done for quality of life. The other thing in the top three, and I'm just going to list the top three plus one more that Commissioner Nicklestone and I were talking about earlier, but the third thing is growth, our economic development. Were you listening?
Exactly.
And that's some residential growth which we're experiencing, but they really want to see more business and commercial. You know why? Because the more business and commercial growth we get, and thankfully we have businesses like your families, Commissioner, I mean Chairman Nicklestone's family, they make what, guards, guardrails and fence, and they're a nice, good-sized company choosing to be here in Stokes County. We have the copper company, what's the name of it now? Veeland. Veeland, can't even remember that name. Veeland Copper. We have Parkdale and some other large businesses, but the real strength of Stokes County is our small businesses. And our main way we can grow with economic development and discounting is probably entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship, oh, what a tough word. Somebody say that for me. Entrepreneurship. And business expansion and business retention. Those are the three best shots we have for economic development. The two other things, let me kind of slide two others in here. One of them is internet, high-speed internet access. It's particularly important with all these schoolchildren who are trying to do their work online these days. Some of them have very limited or no internet access. We don't need to let that keep happening here in our county. We need broadband access in a favorable way for all of our county citizens. The other thing that I'll mention, and this one's something that I don't particularly like to talk about, but we need to, is the drive problem. It is not going away. It's sort of been pushed aside and pushed back into the shadows because of the COVID, the virus, but it's still out there and it's probably more than it's, possibly more than it's ever been. And we need as a county to be working on that and find ways to deal with it. Got a story to tell about my granddaughter, cuts my hair. She's doing a better job cutting my hair, except she's having less hair to cut. She and I were talking, she gave me a haircut today, did a good job. She said when I was mayor, I would call classes over because I like to get young people involved with government, let them learn, let them experience it, and hopefully some of them will stay interested and become a part of it. And she said, I was mayor, and her class came to the city hall there, and I met them there, and I liked for them to have a meeting. So one of them, we'd let them elect their own mayor and the other council members, and she was the mayor, I believe. She ended up with a gavel, and I thought I was doing a favor, and she told me today how embarrassed she was. But anyhow, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the county employees I've worked with. They've been very good to me. Got along well with them. I hope they feel like they've got along well with me, I hope they feel like I've got along well with them. But it's been, we've been a good team. We've accomplished a lot, and I have high hopes for, where's Sonia? Sonia, she's still back there? I see her hand for Sonia and Wayne Burnecastle and Commissioner Minenhall who has another four years, and you and Rick, Rick Morris. I have real high hopes for the board that's going to be in place after the next meeting, and I think they will continue a lot of the good things that we've been doing up to now. And they'll certainly, I'll be a resource if I can help in any way at any time. Anybody wants me to fuss at them or fuss at somebody for them or gets crazy calls and say, well, I don't want this person to keep calling me, tell them to call me, I'll talk to them, as long as it's not too many, as long as it's not too late at night. But anyway, it's been enjoyable in a lot of ways for the past 16 years, and it's been a challenge, but it was a good challenge. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I bet Commissioner Langford has something to say.
I'm going to let him go ahead and go.
You, I think you covered most of it, Mr. Walker. We, I've said it over and over and over, we got a county that is made up with excellent people. It's the people of this county who makes the difference. And then you go right into the employees, and they do an excellent job for us, and I've always, I've always been really thankful that we have the employees we've got and the ones that really cares about being employee of Stokes County. And all the workers, I don't think you could have a better mission, I don't think you could have a better job, workers. It's just everything comes together like it should come together, and I'm just very proud of it. I'm proud to be part of a community like Stokes County and serve with the people that I've been able to serve with for several years. But I'm very thankful, I always thank my Lord for everything he does for me, and he shows me the way and makes decisions for me, and I am very proud of that, very, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, when I first took office here and sat right here at this extra chair, looking out this way, we had a vacant seat right here beside of me. I think Jimmy decided to play chicken with the deer down here on the road, and still not real sure who won that battle yet.
The deer won.
The deer won, okay. Well, I think somebody said something about buying you a scooter as a going-away present, so is Brenda going to be okay with that?
If you can talk your head to it.
All right.
If anything, talk your head to it.
I do want to say it's been an honor and privilege to serve with you, Commissioner Walker, the last two years, and you, Commissioner Langford, the last six months here, and I wish you both the best. I hope you get some peace and rest after you leave the board here, and by all means it might be sometime I call on you two for a question, for some advice that y'all probably faced in the past, so thank y'all for all you've done and still look forward to hanging out with you some. So with that, I'll move on to our county manager, Ms. Oakley.
Can I say one more thing real quick?
Yes, sir.
I got a lot of family here this evening.
You do. Took up the room, I tried to figure where it was all coming from, so.
If your family or friends, raise your hand, please.
It took Will a minute to put their hand up, what's that about?
He's a friend.
Yeah.
The manager's a friend, Sammy is too, but you're not. A lot of family, I just want to, while we're having a chance to say something, I just want to thank y'all for being here.
Y'all might be related because your hairstyle is getting the same. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Well, you know, I just want to tell Jimmy, Jimmy, it's been a privilege and an honor to work with you, you being a commissioner, and over the years of me watching you, listening to you, and seeing what you do and how you've done it, I could tell that he was an individual that seeked wisdom and knowledge from your God, and that you governed in a way that you were fair and consistent, and you tried to treat everybody the same, so.
Thank you, sir.
That I seen in you, and I thank you for it.
I appreciate your kind comments.
And I hope now that during your retirement, that you enjoy yourself, you and your wife enjoy the time that you, that God has given you and allowing you to share together, along with your family here, it looks like you've got a big family, and it looks like God's blessed you, and maybe he will continue to do that in your ventures that you're going to, that you're going to go into now. Get you a, get away from them scooters, man. Get you a big motorcycle.
There you go.
If you hit something, it runs over it in that direction. If you're going to hit the road, hit the road and not a deer, you know, run the highway.
Good advice.
It's been a privilege and an honor to work with you, and I wish you the best of luck. And Mr. Langford, it's been a privilege and honor to work with you for all these years that under, as tax administrator, and Jimmy is, as I was tax administrator, and now it's the privilege that you had in me to serve as county manager. I do thank you very much, and I wish you the best. And to Ronnie and Sonia and Wayne, congratulations. Alman Ma and myself are, we'll be praying that you will also, will be blessed with a lot of guidance and wisdom and strength in your decisions in what you do and you be consistent in what you do, and I know you will, and I think Stokes County is blessed with people that are willing to serve and be dedicated their time and effort to the folks, so. I would just say to every, to the citizens and everybody in Stokes County, you know, work with you guys, not against you guys, and then if you do that, you're going to do some great things for Stokes County, and that's what I'm hoping will happen in the time to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm also, yeah.
One more, I know usually a commissioner doesn't go around a second time with comments, but I just want to say to Ernest and Jimmy, I came in fresh and new four years ago. Been in education all my life, had worked with the Board of Education for many years, but had never been a county commissioner. Fresh, brand new on the job, and you two helped take me under your wing, and I watched y'all as you performed your duties up front, and I tried to take away everything I could that I could use in my re-perform. And so Ernest, you and Jimmy, thank you for your providing me with assistance during my first year, because if you've never been a county commissioner, that first six months is a very tough learning process, but y'all helped me tremendously, tremendously, and I want to say thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good comments, very kind.
Good to work with you.
I want to give our clerk to the board a few minutes if she wants to, to say something to our leaving commissioners.
It's like Ernest gets like an encore going away. We did this once already, just a couple of years ago, after 12 years for him on the board, and got a rare opportunity to come back for a few months, and it's been really nice to have you back here, and I've always enjoyed working with you, and I'm sad to see you go again. Maybe you'll come back again, you never know.
I never know. I'm a player.
Yeah, I hope you enjoy your retirement and really be retired, maybe. Yeah, I hope you, I hope you enjoy your retirement and really be retired maybe this time. And then for, for Jimmy, it's going to be very strange to, to be here without you here. I've not been in this position without you here and have always appreciated your guidance on things, and you know a lot about government and procedure. But most of all, I appreciate your friendship and kindness in a lot of situations and being sort of mentor about some things and learning from you. And always, you always took time to make sure everything was good and ask if I was okay with things, personal and work, and I appreciate that a lot. It's always been a really, a really nice thing. And you will, you will be missed here, for sure. It's going to be very, very strange to come into a meeting that you're not at. But I hope you enjoy.
I'll be here in spirit.
But I hope you enjoy yourself and take some time for your family and do some things you like to do, and some camping and all those things, and really enjoy that.
Thank you very much. And, uh, you said it's going to be strange, uh, for me not to be here. It's going to be strange not to be here. Because it's been kind of, when, when you, or y'all know, you fellow commissioners, when you're in a position like this, you kind of have to plan your life around it. When's my next meeting? How many meetings do I have this day? That type of thing. And so it all kind of, in a way, to some extent, revolves about, revolves around being a commissioner. But Shannon, thank you for your comments. And I wish you and Jake, uh, Julia, all the employees the best also. And, uh, I consider you friends. If, if any of you ever get in a situation where I can help in any way, please let me know.
And I'm going to ask the woman who's been here the longest, not anybody, if she has any comments before we adjourn.
I've been working, always working with Ernest earlier, and the last six months, and last six months, a lot, a lot, and, uh, a lot of changes, and I hope you have a retirement and for yourself, but I'll be.
Thank you. I want to say something about this lady, too, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're fortunate, as Commissioner Langford mentioned, to have the caliber of people that we have in, in some of the positions. I'd say about all the positions in the county. Julia's special. She, she had my respect right from the start. She has a way of kind of keeping us commissioners straight when it comes to finances, and she's always on her game. I don't know what would happen to her. I don't see it right now, but she's got this one calculator. If anything ever happens to her, I don't know what that would do to Julia. But she can sit in the meeting and just be keeping up with the meeting and running that calculator at the same time. But the most important thing is, this lady is sharp. She knows her stuff. And I think even when the auditors would come, they'd, they'd have a lot of respect for your opinion and, and thoughts about the finances of the county. But I'm going to miss all of you, and again, wish you the best.
Hey, before you adjourn, I'm going to, maybe, I'm going to. I'll let you, yeah, let you do that one out for him, and then I got this one for Ernest there. And there's a couple of, um, signs that Commissioner Minenhall dug out of the archives. Some political, some all-political signs.
They've been sanitized, so you did.
He's dug out here, brought up, and some people have signed some of them. And I'll lay them on this table over here with the marker, and if anybody that's here wants to sign those for him to take home, yeah.
I got one question. Hold it up real quick. When was that picture taken, Ernest?
It was his high school election.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
You, you tell I had changed.
Yeah, you changed for this.
I dug deep to find those two, I tell you.
Commissioner Langford, do you remember what they used to say about Willis Overbeef when he put his picture on his sign? They said they believed he was using his high school picture.
All right. So all we have here is a flag. Stokes County says, presented to Commissioner Jimmy Walker and appreciation, appreciation of sixteen years of loyal and dedicated service to Stokes County.
That's very nice.
Thank you.
That's a surprise.
And also, we have, we have a certificate of appreciation awarded to Ernest Langford for your service as Stokes County Commissioner from May eleventh, twenty twenty, and this is awarded on the third day of December. So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to remind everyone, um, that's here to come to the third floor conference room for some refreshments and cake, so.
Sounds nice.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I send we a jar?
Who wants it?
Don't matter, it don't matter.
Any comments? All in favor say aye. Aye? Meeting adjourned.
We made it. Thirty-four minutes.
Thirty-four is pretty good.